All right, if I'm correct, everything is still good to go. And it is 9:00 a.m., so let's go ahead and get started. It is Tuesday, October 26, 2021, 9:00 a.m. This is the regular meeting for the Lake County Board of Supervisors. Let's go ahead and start this meeting with a moment of silence. Is there a moment of silence from anyone? Do you want to turn on your microphone, please?
I do know. I don't have the name at this point, but I know that we had a fatal accident south of Middletown this morning or this weekend, which was a tragedy. She lost a young life. I think the individual was 10 years old in an accident. So we'd just like to have a moment of silence for that family.
Absolutely.
Victoria's family, I think, is listening.
Supervisor Scott, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin.
At Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move on down the agenda. Item number four, are there any extra items not on the agenda that Board of Supervisors or staff wish to add? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that folks wish to pull from the consent agenda? I believe there was one for the... Where is that one? The glasses are fogging up.
Mr. Chair, I'm requesting to pull 5.10, which is an item for health services, just for a small point of clarification.
That was the one I was looking for, so thank you very much for that. And any others from the board? All right, so other than 5.10, let's open it up for the public. Anyone wish to pull an item from the consent agenda from either the Zoom room or the boardroom? If you are in the Zoom room, please click the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand, or dial *9 if you're calling via telephone. Again, this is to pull an item from the consent agenda. And seeing none from the boardroom and none from the Zoom room, let's bring it back to the board for action, minus 5.10.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items number 5.1 through 5.9, and then 5.11 through 5.14.
We have a motion from supervisors. It seems that Supervisor Crandall has been cut off from the microphone. Can we make sure his microphone is on?
Does mine?
So we have a second from Supervisor Crandall, a motion from Supervisor Simon, a second from Supervisor Crandall. We all heard him up here. There we go, we're back.
There we go.
And so, roll call, please, Johanna.
All right, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Fobatier?
Aye. Thank you very much. And since it's 9:04 a.m., let's go ahead and take up item 5.10, since I don't believe it'll take much time at all. So let's go ahead and open that one up. WAVE the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services. And B, approve the First Amendment to the agreement between the County of Lake and management connections for temporary staffing support services completed during fiscal year 2122 for some not to exceed $60,000, and authorize the board chair to sign the amendment. CIO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just really briefly, the reason I ask that this be pulled is because there is no reason for your board to waive the formal bidding process. This is an amendment to an existing contract. You did allow the formal bidding process to be waived much earlier on, given the state of the pandemic emergency and the need for temp staff. As you remember, early on, they were heavily involved in supporting our vaccination sites. Their roles have transitioned to other purposes now, still providing a great needed service to the public health response. But there's just no reason to waive. And so what we're asking your board to do is simply approve the First Amendment to the agreement.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions or comments from the board? Open it up for the public. Any comments from the public on item 5.10? And seeing none from the board, and seeing none from the Zoom room, bring it back for action. And again, only part B, please.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the First Amendment to the agreement to the County of Lake and the management connections for temporary staffing support services completed during the fiscal year 2021, '22, for a sum not to exceed $60,000, and authorize the board chair to sign the amendment.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, a second by Supervisor Paeska. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Fobatier?
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving on to public input, or 9:05 a.m. Is there any public input from anyone here in the boardroom or the Zoom room on any item that is not on our agenda? And see no public comment in the boardroom, and see no public comment in the Zoom room.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to make sure you are aware that there was an e-comment posted in the public comment section of your agenda.
Yes, and we all should have received that and had the time to read that. I know I was able to read that. Let's go ahead and close public comment and move on to item 6.2, 9:06 a.m. Presentation of Proclamation Designated the Month of October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We'll go ahead and go down and read it. You've taken over the boardroom. All right, today is proclamation designated the month of October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Lake County. Whereas domestic violence impacts women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds. Emotional and physical scars resulting from domestic violence are often severe and long-lasting. And whereas, in the past 12 months, Lake County law enforcement responded to over 294 incidents of domestic violence, including men, women, and children. In the past 12 months, the Victim Witness Division of the District Attorney's Office has served 498 victims of domestic violence. And the District Attorney's Office has prosecuted 82 felonies and 187 misdemeanor acts of domestic violence. Lake Family Resource Center responded to 902 crisis line calls, served victims, and additionally sheltered 75 domestic violence victims and their children for a total of 3,797 bed nights. And whereas, it is crucially important to hold perpetrators responsible for assault and to prevent domestic violence at every opportunity. And whereas, family violence is a community problem, stopping the cycle requires not only the strength and courage of survivors, but also the support and involvement of all members of the community. And whereas, many organizations such as the District Attorney's Office, Sheriff's Office, Lakeport Police Department, Clear Lake Police Department, and Lake Family Resource Center are committed to ending domestic violence in Lake County and provide essential crisis intervention and prevention services to all members of our community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the month of October 2021 is designated as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Lake County, and our community is urged to support the efforts of the agencies assisting victims of domestic violence and to increase their involvement in efforts to prevent domestic violence, thereby strengthening our community and creating an environment which honors, nurtures, and protects all members of every family. Passed and adopted this 26th day of October, 2021. And so I'd like to invite Lake Family Resource Center up here. I do want to say something before they speak. It saddens me so much that the people, especially our children, our domestic partners, that we look to each other as the people that love us, that want to care for us, that want to see us thrive and be successful in life, that those are the very people that sometimes can hurt us the most. And I can't appreciate Lake Family Resource Center enough, the amount of hours that you've offered to help support families, the amount of calls that you've had someone else, you've offered your ear to help them go through these problems. Having that support when the closest people who should be providing that support are not is absolutely crucial to help people get through these problems. So thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you for that, and thank you for the acknowledgement and the understanding, and for those words. Thank you for that recognition. The very first Domestic Violence Awareness Month was observed in 1987. That's only 35 years ago. We've come a long way, but we still have a long way still to go. And the purpose of Domestic Violence Awareness Month is to join advocates and partners from across the nation to join forces to celebrate those who actually survived and were able to escape, and to mourn those who lost their lives at the hands of their abuser. This year's national campaign's theme, set forth by the National Network to End Domestic Violence, is "Everyone Knows Someone," because one out of four women and one out of seven men will fall victim to domestic violence. In Lake County, we have an amazing and very strong team, and we couldn't provide these services without all of these advocates standing on the side of me here, and without all of our community partners, as the proclamation stated, our law enforcements, our medical, our social service partners. And not only does this group of individuals in Lake County join together for this Awareness Month and join forces, we do this every day. So on behalf of Lake Family Resource Center, I would like to thank the county for proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. If anybody would like to contact our services, we have our national... I'm sorry, we have our local crisis hotline, which is 888-485-7733. And our advocates will answer 24/7 by either phone or text options.
All right, thank you so much. And we're a little early for 6.3. I'm looking at CIO Hutchinson. I think our 7.2 is something that we can take up right now. I don't think it'll take a huge amount of time.
It would not take much time, but I want to make sure our HR director is here with us. Let's see.
Yep, I see her with us.
There she is. Okay, great.
So let's go ahead and start 7.2. Direction to staff regarding recruitment for new agricultural commissioner upon the retirement of Steve Hagic effective February 11, 2022. CIO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we are aware that our longtime ag commissioner is retiring soon. He has given the date of February 11. And so we just wanted to bring this agenda item to your board to seek your direction for how you would like to go about recruiting for his replacement.
Thank you very much. Any comments from board members on strategies that we'd like to follow? So I know that we always work on succession plans. However, I always feel that open application is the best way to go with the anticipation that those who have been possibly set in place for the succession will submit an application. I think it makes us... It ensures that we are getting the best person for the job for the public. That is what we need to do, not the person we know the best. And I hope that that person will put in an application, and I hope that we will receive other good applications so we get to make the best decision on the application process. And that's the idea that I'd like to propose that we move forward with.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I see a lot of nodding heads. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I completely agree.
Okay. That was a simple conversation.
So then the direction is go ahead and conduct an open recruitment. That is the norm, so we appreciate that. But the timing is a little challenging around the holidays, and so Director Samick and I were conferring on that. And her recommendation would be that we open the recruitment in early January, because we're concerned that, you know, that if we receive applications and nothing, and we're not able to move forward over the holidays, then we may lose applicants that have applied. So the other drawback to recruiting, to opening the recruitment January 3 is there is a potential for a gap, if, you know, to get a candidate here, depending on the outcome. So any particular input around the timing of the recruitment?
And board, another option would be to open it now and put in the recruitment posting that we will not be conducting interviews until after the first of the year due to the holidays, and at least they would know in upfront. So that could be another option.
I'm in agreement with that recommendation, getting it open as soon as possible so we can get the ground running. We know how challenging it is at this point on the recruitment effort. So yeah, I would completely agree with that assessment by Pam, our human resource director.
I'm seeing a lot of nods, and absolutely. I know that we kind of made that same decision with our PHO process, where we were told that the holidays could be difficult, but at the same time, it can provide us with an opportunity. And so let's not miss that opportunity, and let's be as transparent as possible with the applicants that submit to let them know the dates of when things are expected to happen and when the position will be open.
Okay, I'm hearing a consensus, and that's how we'll proceed. Thank you.
And so let's open this up for the public before we close this up. Any comments from the public? We seem to have vacated the boardroom. And in the Zoom room, we have nothing, and direction has been provided. And so we'll go ahead and close up that item. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And let's go on to our 9:15 a.m. item, presentation of our annual report on the activities of Lake County Resource Conservation District. And I believe that we have Victoria Brandon with us today, but I am going to pass it on to CIO Hutchinson in case you wanted to introduce the item.
Yes, actually, Matthew Rothstein is Victoria's contact person, and he'll introduce.
Good morning, board members, and thank you for the opportunity to address these this morning. As your board will recall, local resource conservation districts were combined to form Lake County Resource Conservation District in 2016. In the years since, your board has received an annual report on the district's activities. Victoria Brandon of Lake County RCD is present today to deliver this year's report. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Matthew, members of the board. Good to see you today after all that wonderful rain. So I'm going to... I'm set to show my screen? Okay?
Yes, you should be able to.
All right, let's hope it works. Okay, you see that?
Yes, we do.
All right, I'm going to put it in slideshow. And I'm going to go through the first couple of slides really quickly, Matthew, get the high points about our history, so we can talk mostly about what happened this past year and have some time for questions. So an RCD is a special district of the state of California. We, however, operate entirely locally with a locally selected board of directors and local staff. We've gone way beyond the original mandate that's protecting soil to all sorts of resource protections. We do soil and water conservation, wildlife habitat, basic species, and so forth. We were originally five RCDs in Lake County. For many years, it was East Lake and West Lake, and as Matthew just said, we consolidated as one RCD on July 1, 2016. Our current directors are President Harry Lyons, who I believe may be joining us from his phone in a parking lot this morning while he waits for his doctor's appointment, and Jim Bridges, Randy Craig, Bill Lank, and Shula Chup, and Mary Jo Velazquez. This picture dates back... We have not met in person since March 2020. This picture predates that, and so you'll see our former director, the late Ron Yoder in the blue shirt in the middle. We really miss around a lot, but we're one... We're pleased to have Randy come on and to replace him very aptly. So here's a summary of our activities of 2021, some of which happened, some of which didn't. Our annual weed tour, we had to cancel again this year. Field Days in the Creek and Kids in the Creek, which are programs to get kids out into nature where they learn about natural history, 4th and 5th graders, those were both had to be canceled because of COVID. The native plant project, where we were going to... In the past years, with several years, we have acquired starts of various kinds of native plants and made them available to the public in collaboration with the master gardeners. We had to suspend that again because of COVID. All of our volunteers are seniors, and none of us felt like getting involved in kind of ongoing relationships with the general public. The Frank Meisenbach Scholarship, which is $500 per student per year for graduating seniors and also graduates of Woodland Community College in agriculture and resource conservation. That we tried to conduct last year, but there were no suitable applicants. I think also because so many of the school programs had been suspended because of COVID. Trout in the Classroom, yes, we conducted that, and we'll be talking about it in a minute. Had heavy engagement in the Community Wildfire Protection Plan in collaboration with the Risk Reduction Authority. Eight Mile Valley Project, we were going to finish it. There was a glitch, so it's not going to be finished till next spring. We'll talk about that in a minute. Go through eradication project is ongoing, as is Trailside Park reforestation. So the trout program is a really cool thing, where aquariums are brought into classrooms. They are supplied with fish eggs. The students raise them to the point where they can be released back into nature. And then along the way, they learn all sorts of things about fish and about habitat and water resources. We hope that they begin to learn about conservation ethic, understand ecosystems, they get some hands-on science, and then they all get to go out and release the fish, which is an exciting moment. This year, we had seven classes that raised and released trout. There were active student participation throughout. And we're going to have eight of them again next year, starting in April. And that is our associate director, Tony Boylen, and this is his project, and he deserves all the credit for making that happen last year and this year as well, and in the past, and we are hoping the future. There are some of the trout in the classroom, little fishes swimming about. And here is a program of one of the classes releasing their fish in Blue Lakes. Because these trout are present in Blue Lakes, we've got permission to release them there. We can't release them in a Clear Lake, because they're not present in Clear Lake. In any case, Tony supplied a bunch of additional photographs. Everybody seemed to have a great time, and looked like they were really learning the lessons that this program has to teach them. So the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. The RCD, for a number of years, has employed the Fire Safety Council Coordinator for the county. And this preparation of the plan is one of the mandates of that job. We also employ Linda Jottnan as our administrative assistant. She was the Fire Safety Council Coordinator for many years and took the county through this process approximately 10 years ago, it may even have been a bit longer, when we last devised the CWPP. Last year, through Clerk, we were the beneficiary and Civic Spark Fellow, which is a recent graduate. In this case, it's a fantastic young person named Laurel Bard, who was, in effect, lent to us to do technical work for the CWPP. And she is a whiz at getting diverse kinds of computerized data and mapping it all and coming up with a cohesive, single report on what it all says, presented in a format that people can actually understand. And that, I think, has been the most valuable part of the RCD's contribution to this.
Victoria, if I can interrupt you right now?
Sure.
We have not heard your last 10 seconds. We are all getting an emergency missing person report on our phones, and then they're all yelling at us.
Oh, wow.
And so we just missed that. So if you can just go back 10 seconds and continue from there?
Okay, okay.
Sorry about that.
So did you hear about Laurel, the Civic Spark Fellow beneficiary, that she's been doing this fantastic mapping in the CWPP?
Yep.
Okay, that summarizes that one. But the other thing is that Harry, Dr. Harry Lyons, our RCD president, despite his own professional training being in other fields altogether, has been regularly participating in the RRA meetings and trying to facilitate this process as much as possible. The editing of the new plan is nearly complete. We're looking for photos. If anybody out there has got good quality photos of the... That would be suitable for inclusion in the plan, please let us know. And it's essential that we do this, not only in and of itself, but also because having a completed plan is a prerequisite for getting state funding for wildfire prevention and resilience in programs, which, as we all know, is essential for maintaining the safety of our communities as we move forward. So we're looking forward to bringing that forward for public comment probably very soon in the new year, and then bringing it to the... I assume it will come before the board eventually for adoption. And along the way, any improvements that can be provided are absolutely welcome. Eight Mile Valley Project, we've been involved with for many, many years, dating back to about 2000. This is an extremely valuable project that will reduce erosion at the headwaters of Scott's Creek. I've reported on it in past years. It's one of the things that the Water Resources Control Board thinks is absolutely essential to making it possible for the county to meet the obligations under the TMDL on Clear Lake preservation. However, we did a lot of work out there. This picture is back from the fall of 2019, when heavy equipment was out there, re-sculpting this whole eroded valley, turning it back into a gradual slope that will allow the water to beander gently over the landscape. So again, rather than causing erosion and back cuts and eventually winding up in the lake. This is the kind of work they did. You see there inside the blue line is some eroded streambed, and here is a rock moving in to stop that water from moving. Now, 2021 was supposed to be the cleanup of this. We did all the heavy work, finished the year before. It was certainly... There were problems in 2020, because all BLM lands were closed because of COVID for a while. But we got through the rest of that. And the idea was that we had been contracted with Larry Ray Consulting to grow native plants for replanting on this site. And last fall, it was possible to put willow darts down, and Larry just told me the other day that they've had a pretty good take on them. So the immediate threat to erosion for the streambed is considerably reduced. However, we didn't get any rain last winter, and it was not possible to plant the native grasses that had been prepared, and that you see there in his nursery, until it rained, because they'd all just die, and there didn't seem to be any point to that. We then applied to the Water Resources Control Board for a year's extension to get them... Overwinter them for another winter and plant them next spring, assuming that we get some rain. And we did not get that extension. So the funding ran out at the end of March. And by that time, even though we did get eventually some rain, it was too late to put them in the ground anyway. So we've gotten... We're going to be holding them over till next year. We've gotten a little additional funding. The BLM is going to provide some money to make it possible to complete this project. And assuming it keeps on raining, which should... Everybody cross their fingers, we certainly started off well. We should be able to get this in starting sometime probably before the first of the year, give them a nice wet winter to get established, and then that project will be completed. Another project on pretty much the same land is going through eradication. We've been talking about that for years, too. We've been working on it for several years. Again, it got slowed down last year because of COVID and also because of shortage of crews. But we were able to get some work in there last summer. And we've got a grant from the CDFA through the Ag Department to continue work on this next year. Unfortunately, the seasons for working on this are really pretty limited, the technique is to go in there a handful, the great bulk of the material, and then come back in with herbicides as a follow-up mop-up treatment. It works very effectively, but we've got a, had a big slowdown because of the inability to have a full project last year. Through the Ag Department and in partnership with BLM, which is going to do the herbicide treatment, we're hoping to get this worked on next year. Unlike the Eight Mile Valley Erosion Control Project, which we're hoping to say will be done, this is an ongoing project, we're gonna need continued funding from the state and elsewhere, because one thing we've all learned about invasive plants, is unless you go in and mop them up, after they seem to be, the project seems to be over, they're just gonna come back. So, this is probably going to be ongoing for years to come, really essential to keep this out of the lower reaches of the Scotts Creek watershed, because once it gets there, it could get in the lake, it could wind up down in the delta, it could infest the whole region. And so, that's one of the reasons why CDFA has been very glad to help finance the eradication program. We're working on reforested Trailside Park, this photograph dates back several years ago, when as a valley fire resiliency project, we provided the seedlings for a volunteer effort to plant, I think it was 3,000 seedlings in Trailside in one morning there. Subsequently, Caltrans has decided that this would be a great place, they have to plant, oh, plant oak woodland to mitigate some of their projects, particularly the Highway 29 expansion. And so, they provided $600,000 to plant seven acres of oak woodland within the park, and this was, has been going on for a couple of years. We had seen grew the acorns to plant in size, planted them with protections, and started planting and planting in December of 2019. So, last year, I'm sorry, that was December 2020, I haven't started. So, last year, the county looked at this project, which was supposed to include maintenance of the plants over several years, which is absolutely essential to keep them going, and realized that what we were doing for the maintenance was to go in with a water truck and water the plants regularly. Now, the regular, they realized that for what it's costing to ship in water like that, there would be money to plant, to dig a well instead, or drill a well instead. And so, it was decided to divert the Caltrans funding for watering to construction of a well, which was concluded in April 2021. And so, now, this is going to be an ongoing asset for the park, to have its own well on site for whenever needed in future construction, for lots of purposes. So, we conducted maintenance through the summer, unfortunately, there was a, is a pretty heavy ground squirrel infestation in Trailside, and they did some damage, killed a bunch of seedlings. So, we are contracted to maintain the, to maintain 75% take, and it got down to 67 thanks to the lovely friendly squirrels, so we're going to be doing some replanting there next spring. So, next, we're certainly hoping to resume the weed tour and our educational project next spring. The Go-Through Project is ongoing. Eight Mile Valley, as I said, we're hoping to get the plants in this winter. Trailside Project Maintenance and Replanting, that'll be going on for another year or two. We're also hoping to get funding to do another project, the Caltrans planting oak trees outside Upper Lake and Highway 29 and West Lake Road. And we're gonna be continuing to work with the Risk Reduction Authority to finalize the CWPP. And please visit our website to learn more, and please be free, feel free to contact me anytime with more questions, and I probably won't be able to answer them, but I'll know who to direct you to, who actually knows what's going on. And at that, I'm gonna turn off the screen share, so we can...
Thank you for your presentation, Victoria. Very much appreciate the work that RCD does. Are there any questions for Victoria? So, I do have a question about the Go-Through, have you been seeing it slowly migrating down the mountain, or has there been enough of a effort made on the project to keep it at bay and keep it in the area that it was originally found?
No, it's moving. It's not moving very far, it's still up in Eight Mile Valley. One of the things we're hoping to do is do a sustained, detailed mapping down below to find out just how far it's gotten. Being, in effect, the season in 2020, when we should have been eradicating it, we weren't able to at the proper season because of the COVID restrictions, and so it got another foothold. So, we're back to where we were a couple of years ago.
Okay. Well, I mean, I appreciate the efforts being made, because it's definitely not something we'd like to see in the lake, and then, as we know, it goes further downstream, it doesn't just stay in our lake as well, so it's a regional issue, and definitely appreciate the fact that CDFA is on board with the funding and the help to mitigate that program. And I'll be very facetious, since you have a problem with ground squirrels, and you have a problem with Go-Through, maybe you can try to move them from the park that they're eating your trees, to put them in an area where they might eat the Go-Through, and that can solve all the problems that you have.
Okay, I'll tell you one little irony there, the river fire moved through that area, did quite a lot of damage, and all the squirrels scorched up there, except for where the Go-Through is growing, because that's in the riparian areas, it skipped right over it.
Well, we can't get that lucky.
No.
But again, I was just kidding about the movement, but it's just...
I know, it's a great idea, if somebody can come out a way to do it, let's hear about it.
It's so unfortunate that we're trying to repair the damage done by the fire, but at the same time, we have to deal with these invasive species that are also posing some sort of threat to our environment and the future of how we, our environment can be utilized as well. So, I do want to talk to you about the CWPP. You said that it was going to be available for public meetings soon, and then we'll come back to the board. Does it go to the cities as well, since they are also impacted by that plan as well?
I'm not sure. No Supervisor Simon has been keeping really close tabs on this, and they're probably no better than I do.
So, the next steps, obviously, as we're working through, and I want to thank very much Dr. Harry Lyons and the RCD for being a constant at the Risk Reduction Authority. So, the CWPP, obviously, is moving forward, Bruno, it will have all community input before it comes to the board. They will start with the fire chiefs, I think, are happening this month, and then, once we get through there, and they get the priority list and other things put together, it'll be circulated throughout the community, and that is the ultimate plan, to have as much community input, and that includes both cities, counties, all of our areas in Lake County. So, that is being worked on, and there's not a specific timeframe, we want it done as soon as possible, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And as spoken earlier, Laurel Bard and many folks at this point are helping push that forward, and Harry Lyons being one of those, and Linda also.
Thank you for that.
And also, now that we have the cities on the Risk Reduction, Risk Reduction Authority, now we have that direct connection, and that can be facilitated a lot easier.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you so much. It sounds like it's kind of like when we do a project upstairs in community development, where you go through all the agencies to get comments, this will be very similar in that sense, that everybody will get their chance to provide input before it gets finalized. So, I appreciate that, that response. My next question for you is, I'm thinking along the lines of Middle Creek Restoration, and I know that we get a lot of folks from RCD that join us in our meetings, just opening up the line of question of, is there anything that RCD can do to help us with that project as far as advocating through CDFA, or through the Water Resources, or anybody that can provide some assistance in oiling and greasing the wheels to make things happen faster, or is it just simply, is it just what it is?
I don't know that we've got much leverage on this, however, if the county has got any specific requests and would like support letters, we certainly would be delighted to provide them.
Okay, it was just something I thought about during the presentation, that there's so many things that you do to look at how things are affected downstream, and how RCD is now, so many different resources, and so, just checking to see how it is that we can incorporate.
Down the road, and once that project is a reality, which I sure hope happens soon, if there are opportunities for doing things like truly replanting, we would certainly be interested in being involved in that kind of project.
Okay, okay. Any further comments, Supervisor Crandall, or questions?
Yes, well, just to add, she mentioned truly replanting, and I know out of the Blue Ribbon Committee, there was a initiative that was passed, and they're looking into getting it approved through the state right now for truly replanting, so I think that's with the Big Valley Tribe and Water Resources, so that could come to fruition like she's talking about.
That's awesome. Thank you for that. Any further comments or questions before we open it up for the public? Just go ahead and open it up for the public, if you have any comments or questions, please raise your hand in the Zoom room, or step up to the microphone in the boardroom. And seeing none in the boardroom and none in the Zoom room, we'll bring it back. And before we let you go, I just want to share a little bit of appreciation, Victoria, you are involved in so many different things that are to protect our environment here in Lake County, I know recently, you've helped us gain support for the Expansion Act for the Walker Ridge area, over for the National Monument, just want to share my appreciation for the work that you do to protect our county, very much appreciated.
Well, thank you very much, Supervisor Sebastian, I really appreciate that, and really appreciate the board's interest in our activities and your support ongoing.
All right, thank you again for being with us today.
Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and move on to Item 6.4, 9:30 a.m., Consideration of the Clear Lake-Lakeport Armory Exchange Agreement to Exchange the Properties Located at 1431 Hoyt Avenue, Lakeport, California, APN #003046750, and 15837 18th Avenue, Clear Lake, California, APN 010043010. CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we're really excited to bring, we're really excited to bring this item to you this morning. Assistant CAO Susan Parker is going to present it, and Sheriff Brian Martin is also here for this item, given his interest in the armory. Go ahead, Susan.
Great, thank you very much, good morning, board. On January 12th of this year, your board directed staff to complete all tasks necessary to declare the county-owned vacant real property as surplus in preparation for the proposed Clear Lake-Lakeport Armory Property Land Swap. On March 16th of this year, your board adopted the following resolutions. Resolution #2021-30, declaring the board's intent to exchange the county property not required for public use located at 15837 18th Avenue in Clear Lake, for property owned by the state and required for county use. And also, Resolution #2021-31, authorizing the execution and implementation of a property exchange agreement with the State of California. Following these previous actions by your board, the State of California Department of General Services entered into an exclusive negotiation agreement with the Chelsea Investment Corporation to develop affordable housing on this property. This property exchange agreement allows the State of California to convey the Lakeport Armory to the County of Lake, and it also allows the County of Lake to convey the vacant land located in Clear Lake to the State of California. The additional considerations by the County of Lake to convey the Lakeport property includes the continued assumption of liability and maintenance, which does allow for the exchange of the property between the unimproved and improved parcels. In addition, this is not a new liability or additional costs, the county already assumes that liability and provides those maintenance services, excuse me. These obligations will end when there is a long-term lease signed with the contractor and/or the State of California divest their property interest in the undeveloped property. I would like to also thank Anita Grant, Patrick Sullivan, Joshua Palmer, from the Department of General Services and Senator Maguire's office, for all their assistance in this endeavor. So, I'm available to answer any of the board's questions.
Thank you very much. Sheriff, would you like to speak on this item? Let us know why or why not you are interested.
I'm very interested in, I'm here just to offer my support for this item. I also want to thank all the hard work, I think the general public thinks that these things are simple, you just say, they're coming up with an agreement, and we'll just trade the state a vacant piece of property for a building they're not using anymore, and it's anything but simple. There's very hardworking people behind the scenes, I'm not going to be able to get to everybody, but Susan certainly, Anita, Carol, Senator Maguire's office, and your board as well, for making this come true. We talked about this many, many months ago, and talked about what a win-win situation this is for everybody, with the opportunities for economic development, for the sheriff's office to be moved into a location that's much more suitable for what we need, and also open up additional office space for other county departments to use. There's really no downside to this, so I'm here just to offer my support, and thank everybody that's been involved in this.
Thank you very much. Anything further from CAO Hutchinson before the board?
Just one additional note around timeliness, with your board's approval today, if we secure your approval, it will then enable the developer to apply for certain funding that has a submittal deadline of November 1st, so there's an opportunity for the developer to seek funding, additional funding for the housing project.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from board members? I appreciate the process that's happened over for the housing development, I know we got four qualified, interested developers, ended up with that one, and I know that we're looking, I believe, at over 100 units at this moment in time, which I think is an amazing, gonna have an amazing impact to our housing crisis that we currently have, and I know that's not the only project that's in the works right now, and I know that we are also looking at focusing on housing as far as the county goes, and so, I think it's a great way to start, and plus, it all, the, I'm not going to use the right term, but the shakedown that will happen from the movement of the sheriff's office to, it will help alleviate some of our struggles that we have in our office space, we have so many people working right next to one another, shoulder to shoulder, rather than having that comfortable office space. I know that that's already happening with our registrar voters, but that's not the only areas that we need to have a little bit more expansion, so I appreciate the fact that we're gonna have that opportunity with the armory, and looking forward to seeing the process in revamping and upgrading that armory for the sheriff's needs. There's nothing further, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Open it up for the boardroom and the Zoom room. I think we're still on our first cup of coffee here. No comment on either one, so let's go ahead and bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Clear Lake-Lakeport Armory Exchange Agreement to exchange the properties located at 1431 Hoyt Avenue, Lakeport, California, APN 003046750000, and 15837 18th Avenue, Clear Lake, California, APN 010043010, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Piska, roll call please, Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Campbell?
Aye.
Supervisor Spot?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Smotkin?
Aye.
Thank you.
And thank you to everyone who worked on this, this is all...
Is that a happy dance?
Yes.
See applause, we're crying, baby.
And the crowd goes wild.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, we're a little early for our next public hearing, so let's go ahead and move on to our 7.3, Consideration of A, waiving the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services, and B, approval of the agreement between the County of Lake and North American Mental Health Services for... Health Services for telehealth psychiatry services, I always do that, for fiscal year 21-22 for a contract maximum of $975,000, and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement. Director Metcalf, welcome.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. I actually have our administrative deputy director, Elise Jones, here with me today. Well, not physically, but she's going to address this item. And then if there are any questions or other comments, I'm here to fill in. So I will turn it over to Elise.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Chair, your board. Thank you, Director Metcalf. So as stated in the memo, this contract actually represents a reduction historically in that we were able to count one of our own providers towards some of our regulatory requirements. The most important part for me and for our department is continuity of care for the people receiving the services. So as stated, we have about almost 400 clients who are currently engaged with a telehealth provider through this contractor, and we, you know, have historically had difficulty retaining providers, and we've had a really good run with this contracted provider where we've had actually a board-certified child and adolescent psychiatrist on with us for quite a while now, which is extremely difficult to find. And so we would be very, it would not feel good from a continuity of care perspective to transition those clients. And so I also, there is also Director Metcalf, our clinical deputy director may be here, who could speak more to the clinical aspect if you desire.
Yes, if he's here, I can't tell, but thank you for that explanation, Elise.
Mr. Chair, he is here. James Usherwood has his hand up.
Good morning.
I would like to also just comment that the doctor that we've built a relationship with over the last, coming up on 3/4 years, serves children and families who are, who have been with him over that time, and, you know, we would not consider changing providers, you know, even if, you know, we could, and, or the opportunity was there, as long as he's going to stay with these families. He is amazing, and these kids are the future of this county. They're being treated for some of the, you know, the kids that we see are the adults of the future that we, that we, you know, that didn't have a doctor like him over, you know, 10, 15 years ago. And so I just wanted to put it out there that we are very, very fortunate that we have a doctor to see these families and these kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. Please, Director Metcalf.
All right, just thanking James for his comment, and just wanted to turn it back to you and the board if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments or questions from board members on this item? So I appreciate all the information provided. I appreciate the need, and at this moment, I cannot approve this item, and I'm going to read why. We just approved the exemptions for competitive bidding, and here we're utilizing 38.2, Section 2, Unique Nature of Goods. Use of this criterion requires documentation demonstrating both why the goods or services contracted are unique and why competitive bidding is precluded. I feel that the reason provided, not clinically advisable, is not one of the options. Again, we do not have in front of us any reports to provide us the outcomes of this other than just anecdotal from staff, which I'm sure they are very accurate in their portrayal, but we do not have an official report from this. We've not, we've never had one that I'm aware of. And while going out to an RFP sounds daunting and like it stops continuity, the idea is not to stop continuity. I think it's possible to do month-to-month until we're done with an RFP because we don't want to have anything stopped. But we need to have the RFP process taken seriously as we've approved with this new purchasing agreement that we approved back on August 11th, I think it was, or whatever that date was. And it's to ensure, especially when we're spending $975,000 of the public's money, that we are expending it in the most efficient way and for the best of possible outcomes. And if it comes back to being exactly the one that we're looking to approve today, then great, that means we know. We actually just kind of took the same action with the open application for our agriculture commissioner. Instead of picking and choosing someone that we feel might fit the position perfectly because we know this person, we want to open it up to make sure, because it's for the best public outcome, to make sure that we're getting the best of who can be in that position and who can be in this contract. And so I just, it's, it's hard for me that we approved this ordinance and allowing agreements like this. It does not follow. It doesn't stay on their continuity. It doesn't say that we stop the services. It just says that you need to do it every three years to make sure that we are getting the best, or every year, depending on if it's a unique service or not, but to make sure that we are getting the best outcomes and the best efficiency use of our funds that we're putting into this. And this is way too large of an amount, $975,000, and so I will not be voting for this today. If there's any further comments, we'll open it up for public. Okay, open it up for public. Any comments from the board or the Zoom room? And seeing none, bringing it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2 as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services.
I'll second the item.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, a second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, Johanna, please.
Okay. Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Nay.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
No.
And Supervisor Swatke.
Nay.
Thank you.
And so I don't want to drop this item because this is an awkward moment for the fact that there is still the need for the service, looking at Ms. Grant and Ms. CAO Hutchinson on the month-to-month continuity to make sure that there is still what is required to make sure that our services can continue until the RFP is completed. Do we need to make a motion to continue month-to-month? I believe that there is something in the contract for the month-to-month continuity. Am I correct on that, Director Metcalf?
We would need to look at that.
To be honest.
The pre-existing contract is what we would need to look at, and we do have standard language in many of our contracts to continue on a month-to-month basis, but we would need to pull that one specifically and look at it.
Doesn't the term extend to June 30th of 2022 on this?
Oh, except that it was just denied.
Right. But...
If it doesn't go beyond June 30th, 2022, you could approve it as is and simply direct that staff.
That's my point.
Complete the RFP with a new agreement to be in place July 1.
I'm going to ask you to say that again. I'm sorry.
So assuming staff issues an RFP for these services, it's going to take a period of months, probably three, four months minimum. And so if you approve this today through June 30th, 2022, which is, the date, I understand, is in it anyway, then, and simultaneously direct staff to issue an RFP so a new agreement can be put in place via competitive bid as of July 1, 2022.
A transition will take some time between one vendor and another, assuming that there would be a change, so...
So I don't mind doing that. I'm a little uncertain. I need to think about it, but I would definitely add that we need to get something back within six months to see where we're at. I want to make sure that we are moving forward on the RFP. I want to make sure that that process is occurring, rather than saying we approve and direct this and then accidentally forget to check in on it, and then we're back again post-July 2022.
The contract also provides it could be earlier terminated with a 30-day written notice, so should the department be able to move more quickly than that, the agreement could terminate sooner. But at least you'd have an end date that's already planned in the contract as it exists that would give time for, as Carol was saying, making sure the RFP was done, getting it out, and then if a new vendor's chosen to coordinate the transition period, which I assume would be significant.
So, and I think that covers the fact that there's probably been services since July 1st to now, since we're looking at this in late October, so that will cover that as well. I'm okay with that. I want to see that progress towards what we've approved and intended, and I think that still pushes us in that direction. So I don't know how comfortable I am with that, but I think that might be the only way to move forward, and so I'll take your lead on that and accept that as a compromise. And so what, if you can help us out with the, we can do the same motion that we did, which was to approve it and then add the direction to staff to go through the process of getting an RFP out with a check-in within the next, since it's already November, I'd like to say check-in by February 1st.
Up to you.
Just to see where we are. Doesn't mean that we're done, but at least to see where we are in the process.
I think what you could do is direct the department head to check in with my office by February 1st.
Perfect.
I don't know that it needs to come back to your board.
No, that's perfect.
But I'm also willing to support the department in getting out an RFP. It's something that we do fairly frequently. We have a template for it. It's easily done.
Okay. So looking to see, do we need to amend or start all over since it was already denied, the motion that was on the floor?
I would recommend that you rescind your prior action and start anew, just for clarity's sake.
Okay. So looking for a motion to rescind prior action?
I make a motion to rescind prior action.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Swatke.
Aye.
Thank you.
I just want to make it very clear, ask the question to Todd, without this contract, our children that are in your care will be unable to get their psychotropic medications. Is that correct?
Yes, as Elise articulated, we're just very concerned about continuity of care here. That's what makes me nervous about this, but...
If I may interrupt, there should be nothing to make anyone nervous. We're going to approve the contract, direct to do an RFP. That way, we can make sure and see if we can make, have that continuity. Today, the approval would create that continuity.
Well, to make it clear, I haven't heard the votes on the floor here, so I just want to make sure my board members know how important this is, that our children do not lose that access to be able to get their medications. These are medications that get them through the day, that keep them in place in a stable environment, and if they don't have that, it's trauma all over again. And on top of that, having these children have to tell their story to somebody new, that's a whole nother trauma, having to relive their trauma or their issues that they have. So I think it's really important to keep this in place, to make sure that we are not moving our children around from different psychologists. I don't know if you've ever been to counseling or psychology, so to a psychologist, but it's hard to have to restart and do it over again, and these are our children that we're talking about. So that's just, I just wanted to make sure that that point was put out there before another motion was made.
Appreciate the comment. And looking for a motion.
Make sure I get this right. Mr. Chair, I want to move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and North American Mental Health Services, telehealth psychiatry services for fiscal year 21-22 for a contract maximum of $975,000. And I'll add in the part to have Todd, our director, check in with the administrative office by February 1st on the progress of the RFP and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement. I hope that covers it.
I think it covers the majority of it because the check-in pretty much says direction to do the RFP.
And you waived the bidding process for this agreement.
Oh, and I waived the bidding process for this agreement.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Grant. So we have a motion from Supervisor Simon, a second by Supervisor Scott. Roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Swatke.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Director Metcalf and your staff.
Thank you.
And we are still a little early here, except we can start...
Five-minute comfort break.
And we are going to take a, let's take a 10-minute break. We'll come back at 10:15, so nine minutes. Are we all ready to go? Sorry, I came back a little late. I apologize for that. My coffee took a little while longer, and I appreciate it. So let's reconvene. It is 10:19 a.m., and we are going to get started with our assessment appeal hearings, sitting as the Board of Equalization. And so 8.1, approve, withdraw of the following assessment appeal applications, #24, 2019, Charles Bellig TRS, #01, 2020, Rodney Miller, and #25, 2020, Lake Shore Drive 2. And with us today, I believe we have David. Is he on at this moment in time? Yes, I see him.
All witnesses should be sworn.
Okay. And so I've sent an allowed to talk to Dave Schwanger, and if you could please present the items to us, and we need to do the swearing-in before the presentation.
Yes, because you'll be a witness.
Okay, and so let's, you are still muted, Dave. Let me see if I can send you an unmute. There we go. Perfect. So let's go ahead and get started on, and we do a swearing for all items within the assessments, all 8.1 through 8.4.
You can do one swearing-in for all, so if you want to, who is here today to speak on these matters...
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read them, or...
Hold on one second.
Anyone who is here today to speak on any of these matters before your board can be sworn in at the outset, and the assessor's staff should also be sworn in at the outset.
Okay.
And that carries throughout the proceedings.
So we are looking at all assessment appeal hearings at the same time, 8.1 through 8.4. If there is anybody here, including staff, who wishes to provide testimony or presentations, we're going to need you to put up your right hand, and I believe Johanna will read the oath.
Yes, so with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
And I'm going to ask a quick question to all of those attending in the Zoom room. Is there anyone, please raise your hand if you wish to speak on any of these items for the appeal assessment, just because I think that we need to at least hear you say, "I do." I know we can't see your video, so if you are here, I want to make sure that we get you through this process first. And seeing none, we will attempt to move forward. So again, thank you for being with us, Dave Schwanger, and if it's possible for you to go ahead and present item 8.1 to us.
Okay. This is to approve the withdrawal of the following assessment appeals, Application 24-2019, Application 01-2020, Application 25-2020, for the applicants with...
24-2019, application 01-2020, application 25-2020, for the applicants with to withdraw these three appeals.
OK. Are there any questions or comments about the withdrawal of those applications? OK. And let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Again, only those who have been sworn in, if you have any comments on any of these items. And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the withdrawal of the following assessment appeals, application number 24-2019, Charles Belig TRS, and 01, 2020, Rodney Miller, and 25-2020, Lake Shore Drive 2.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
OK, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Actually, I think you should be directors. Is that correct, Anita?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Directors, yeah.
Directors.
OK, so Director Simon.
Yes.
Director Crandall.
Aye.
Director Scott.
Aye.
Director Pyska.
Yes.
And Director Savatia.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. 8.2, continue the following assessment appeal applications, number 21-2020, Renfro Family, and 23, 2020, Brad Raveli, and Dave Schwanger.
Yes, we were working with both the applicants in this case, and they've requested continuance. They've given us further information, and we're going to view one of the properties because it is an odd house. So we will venture to see it and then see what the concerns are and address each applicant.
Perfect, thank you very much. And it looks to me as if the extension letters were received in time, hence why this is being put on the agenda as such. And so any questions or comments from board members or directors? I need to change the name, too. And let's open it up for the public. Any comments on these items to extend the time? OK, and I actually, Mr. Schwanger, I did have a quick question for you as we bring it back to the board. What is the timeline that your department has? Is it two years from the original application or appeal being submitted or something like that to be able to get to it?
The application, the statute for the applications, they have two years, we have two years to have the appeals board address the application from the date it was submitted with the clerk of the board.
Perfect, thank you so much. And so let's go ahead and take action on 8.2.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to continue the following assessment appeal applications, number 21-2020, Renfro Family, and number 23-2020, Brad Raveli.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Pyska. Roll call, please, Johanna.
OK, Director Simon.
Yes.
Director Crandall.
Aye.
Director Scott.
Aye.
Director Pyska.
Yes.
And Director Savatia.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. 8.3, approve stipulation on the following assessment appeal applications, A, number 24-2020, Charles E. Belig, and B, number 26-2020, Deborah Ann Bakhtari. And Mr. Schwanger.
Yes, we worked with the applicant, and there are agents on this. We came up, well, we both did appraisals and came to the same conclusion, so we agreed on each of them. They're both riverfront properties on the higher end of the market, and it was agreed upon that this is what we're focusing on.
OK. And then just to clarify, and I believe this is what you said, that this was agreed upon by the property owner, the changes that were made?
That is correct.
OK, perfect. Did want to just quickly mention, not sure if it's, it's definitely not a problem, but for paperwork-wise, the totals are in the penalty section, just to make sure that, just in case, if that could be changed, so that that could be cleared up.
Oh, absolutely. We'll take care of that.
All right. Any comments or questions from the board on these items? OK. And looking to open it up for the public, any comments or questions from the public on these? And hearing none, bringing it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve stipulation on the following assessment appeal applications, A, number 24-2020, Charles E. Belig, and B, number 26, 2020, Deborah Ann Bakhtari.
Second.
We have a motion of Supervisor Simon and a second by Supervisor Scott. Roll call, please, Johanna.
OK, Director Simon.
Yes.
Director Crandall.
Aye.
Director Scott.
Aye.
Director Pyska.
Yes.
And Director Savatia.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And moving on to the last of the appeals, 8.4, deny the following assessment appeal applications on timeliness as no request for hearing received, 02-2020, Beatrice Bell, and 11-2020 through 20-202, H&amp;S Energy. And Mr. Schwanger.
Yeah, so Mrs. Bell actually sold her property for the value that we had rolled, so that's probably why we haven't heard from her. The applicant for H&amp;S Energy is Powermark. They've been appealing everything for the last few years and withdrawn every time we've come up to appeal. I did reach out to the applicant and tried to get ahold of them. I got no response, so. The deny should be for lack of appearance. Their actual applications in this case are timely, so it's not a timeliness issue, it's just lack of, lack of appearance.
OK. And I do see here in the certified mail receipt, it says 9/8. Is that when we received their, their appeal?
The certified mail receipts are just, when you send certified mail, they send it back. So that's just when I received it back, and I didn't receive one from H&amp;S Energy. And there's a typo in the title. It should be 2020-2020.
Oh, 11-2020 through 20-2020?
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's a typo.
OK, we'll make sure we say that correctly for our motion. Any questions or comments from board members? All right, let's open it up for the public. Any comments? I do see that Ms. Grant has a comment. Ms. Grant.
This has actually been covered, I believe, by the department. My concern was it's not at all a question of timeliness, it is simply a failure to appear. The notices that go out don't give a mandate as to time. It's a request and says it should be received by, so timeliness. Had the person appeared here today, it would have been up to your board to hear it or continue it to be heard if the assessor's office wasn't prepared to go forward.
Thank you for the clarification. And I don't remember if I opened it up for the, no, I didn't open it up for the public, so let's open it up for the public. Any comments on this item? And hearing and seeing none, let's bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to deny the following assessment appeal applications on timelines as no request for hearing received.
And actually, I think we want to change that to lack of appearance.
OK, sorry about that. Appeal applications on failure to appear as no request for hearing received, 02, 2020, Beatrice Bell, and 11, 2020 through 20, 2020, H&amp;S Energy.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second by Supervisor Scott. Roll call, please, Johanna.
OK, Director Simon.
Yes.
Director Crandall.
Aye.
Director Scott.
Aye.
Director Pyska.
Yes.
And Director Savatia.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schwanger.
Thank you.
And with that, that puts us perfectly timed for our 10:30 item, which we don't have a 10:30, it's 10:45.
10:45.
Ow! OK. At this moment in time, I think that I will ask for us to go into closed session. I think we can do 9.1 during that time. And let's go ahead and start with calendars, and then if we still have time, I think we can do 9.1 and come back exactly at 9:45. So let's go ahead and start with.
We pulled item two, right, don't we?
We took care of that.
No, we took care of that, yeah. Thank you, though. We all need to keep track of each other. Let's go ahead and start with Supervisor Scott.
Oh, calendars.
Calendars. Tomorrow, I have an act meeting at 1 o'clock via Zoom, and then first five commission meetings starting at 2, and that goes usually till 4:30. On Thursday, Hope Rising Governing Board meeting, and then I have meetings with constituents in the afternoon. On Friday, Cannabis Tax Committee at 2 o'clock. Halloween on Sunday. And SafeRx meeting at 10:30 on November 1st, and then getting ready for Tuesday's meeting.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, so just finishing up the board meeting today. Tomorrow, I have on the calendar, there's an EMCC meeting, I think, tomorrow morning at 9 a.m. I jump on that. And then Thursday, I have the Rotary at 7:30 a.m. And then later on that day, the North Coast EMS. And then Friday, I have the, I have it on air for the drought meeting. And then obviously, rolling into the weekend, I have a charity golf tournament we'll be doing on Saturday for Hammers for Hope at the Adam Springs Golf Course if it's not too wet. And then Halloween on Sunday, meeting with Carol here back on the first, and then back here for the board meeting on the second.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska?
Let's see. The only things that I want to report on from last week, we did have the Disaster Council, which is a quarterly meeting, and had a retirement announced there.
Yeah, Dale.
So Dale Carnathan is going to be retiring, and so we're, Sheriff Martin's going to be recruiting for that position. And I had my Calberry Council meeting, which, let's see. OK. Not much to report on that Calberry Council meeting, I guess.
Say no.
I can't remember. So, yes, so tomorrow morning, I have a meeting at 7:30 with the After the Fire virtual flyout, which I think Supervisor Simon took part in last week.
Yes.
And so I'm going to be doing that tomorrow morning with the After the Fire group, and we're going to be talking about climate change and disasters and housing. And that's an effort to really lobby our Washington partners for more resources for rural counties. And then in the evening, Congressman Thompson's having a town hall at 7 o'clock, a virtual town hall. And Thursday is the North Coast EMS JPA meeting, then Broadband Economic Development Task Force meeting, then the Area on Aging Governing Board meeting. Friday, the court day. And then I'm going to be touring the library with Christopher, and then I'll be meeting with Scott Harder for my special district's in-person tour, which is what I'm doing now after a year, or almost a year. And then Sunday, from noon to, I think, 5, the Main Street of Kelseyville will be closed for traffic, and it'll be a Halloween celebration for kids and families. So it's going to be a really great place for people to celebrate safely if they choose. And it looks like my meeting on Monday got canceled.
Two seconds ago.
Two seconds ago. All right. And then, of course, next week's very long board meeting into the evening.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you. So I'll go ahead and report on Saturday was the North Shore Fall Festival. It was, even though it was raining, it was still a really good event. Enjoyed seeing everybody out there. We had the North Shore Fire Fund group out there, you know, talking about different things they want to do with the fire departments on the North Shore, things like that. Mr. Raiz was out there selling stuff for the high school, and just all-around good event for the town itself. We haven't had anything like that since, you know, the whole situation with the pandemic and whatnot. So to get everyone together, it was a really good thing to see, despite the rain, and actually, more people seemed to enjoy it than anything. Matter of fact, I just wanted to also highlight that Sunday, of course, you know, we had this real downpour of rain, and in doing so, I got a lot of calls about the Middle Creek area, went out to the bridge, and as I was leaving, Water Resources pulls up and they're going to check something. And then also Rhodes is out there, you know, so they're working on Sundays even despite this whole situation. So I wanted to give them, you know, props for being out there and working, you know, despite, I mean, I had no contact with them and they were out there, you know, so no one, so I don't think that the public realizes that our crew is working hard on different things and trying to check things out. So just wanted to give them a shout out for that. Let's see, we got agenda review tomorrow at 10:30. Thursday, Lake County Solid Task Force at 10, Area Agency on Aging at 1:30 on Thursday. Clogba, I have to, the Business Association, that's at the Moose Lodge, 6 p.m. in Clear Lake Oaks on Thursday. I'll be there. And then Friday, that was canceled. We, RCRC visit got rescheduled for December, right? So Cannabis Tax Committee at 2 p.m. Let's see, and Monday, we have Middle Creek Restoration, and back here Tuesday for the board supervisors meeting.
Thank you very much.
Stretch it out five minutes.
Five minutes? You don't want to go to closed session quite yet. I appreciate the fact that Vice Chair Crandall mentioned Public Works and Water Resources. They were preparing for this storm, knowing that there was probably going to be some fallen trees, some road hazards, and some other issues, potential flooding. And I know that they did everything they could to try and clear up the roads and make sure that everyone was as safe as can be, but we saw quite a lot of rain. I know we've all been asking for rain, but it would be nice if we can just have it continue on not so heavy for a long period of time rather than just all at once, but we'll take it when we can get it. So glad that it's finally turned on us and that we're starting to see some hydration of our soils, hydration, water added into our creeks. It's much better. Want to talk about real quick, I want to give a kudos to one of my colleagues. I was on a phone call with Supervisor Simon, and I just want to, I know I thanked him publicly and expressed my gratitude for his words and his efforts, but he absolutely, I don't want to give specifics to the meeting that we were in, but he absolutely did a fabulous job of speaking for the county, representing the county, and trying to get people to see what we see here when we live in Lake County. I know I spoke after him, and I had to cut myself very short because there was not much more I could add after what was said by Supervisor Simon. This was at a state-level conference call that we had, and I just want to share publicly that I appreciate to have that voice here on the board and to try and get the things that we need to do in order to achieve success here in Lake County. So thank you for your efforts and crossing our fingers that it made a difference. Also, on Friday, I joined in at the Lakeport Museum. I want to say from being there that I've probably never been there before, not the museum, but the memorial for the lost first responders, because I don't remember feeling that sense of emotion from being there. It was, it was a very heavy, but yet very wonderful memorial for the seven first responders that have lost their lives in duty. There were firefighters as well as deputies and police officers that read out the names, read out how it was that they lost their lives, and then would repeat their names again and say the exact date of their end of duty, and then they would ring a bell. And that bell is hard. That was a hard one to listen to. Wonderful memorial that was put together, I believe, by our Sheriff's Association. And so appreciated being there. I do know that there was a lot of unfortunate comments being made by an event that a lot of us came together for to help fundraise for our community. I just want to repeat that, I want to make sure that people recognize that the I just want to repeat that, I want to make sure that people recognize that the ordinance that we passed last year is no longer active. It sunsetted on October 1st. The rules that we have are rules that are provided by the state, which allows for people who are vaccinated to be unmasked even indoors and for those who are unvaccinated to mask. Again, the ordinance that allowed us to provide education and provide fines is no longer an active ordinance in the county of Lake. And so a lot of people are using rules of the past to engage in the present and we, we understand it's frustrating that things are always moving. This is a pandemic. It's not just a normal day. It's kind of like engagement in war where you have to move with the new knowledge that you have. And unfortunately, we've had to move quite a lot in order to engage with the pandemic to make sure that we're providing the best outcomes. And at this moment in time, those are the rules that we have in place and no rules were broken during that event other than maybe a few stomachs. And then for what's happening next week. Let me see, I got lost here. I have a fire district meeting that I'm going to be going to tomorrow after our agenda review. I have a overlapping stuff. I have the solid waste task force on Thursday and then also a broadband meeting to discuss our move and push for expanded broadband in the area. A CSAC phone call at the end of that day. I will be, I will be seeing how things turn out upstairs in our courthouse on Friday. And also will be part of a conversation to move along, part of our economic development priorities with the credit cards that we had approved a while back. And then Middle Creek Restoration Project meeting over on Monday. And it looks like I am not meeting with the CAO. And then coming back here for Tuesday for a meeting, October 31st. A lot of people have already spoken about some of the activities that are happening for the holiday in the city of Clearlake. Trunk or treat is going to happen in Austin Park. If you have not requested to have a car there so that you can decorate your trunk and hand out candy to the community, please do so. You can call the city or you can call Joyce Overton and those numbers are easy to find. And I am still working on getting more candy so that that event can go off wonderfully. Wonderful event for the entire family, definitely a safe event as well if you are worried about COVID because there's a lot of room in the park and there's definitely spacing in between trunks. And so hopefully things will go well and the weather will cooperate. But I'm happy to see that we can still party even when it is raining at the North Shore. So that's always good news. All right, I've spoke long enough. It is now 10:45 AM. We can move on to our item and 10:45 AM Public Hearing Discussion and Consideration of Appeal AB 21-03 of the Planning Commission Approval of Major Use Permit UP 20-45, an adoption of the initial study IS 20-56 for a commercial cannabis cultivation license on a property located at 10717 and 10680 Schuet Road, I think I said it right, Upper Lake, APN 003-002-11 cultivation site and 003-001-21 clustering property. And with us, we have Mr. Eric Porter from our Community Development Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And let's go ahead and wait till you get seated so we can get you on the microphone so everyone can hear you. Looks like you have more paperwork for us. And Ms. Grant, would you like to start?
I just wanted to say that there's a swearing in of witnesses.
Yes.
That has to occur. I do see the green sheet, but I believe your board has an issue to take up initially with regard to the initial study.
Correct. And so let's go ahead and start with the swearing in. If we have anybody in the Zoom room or audience as well as staff, if you're in the Zoom room and you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand so we can make sure to unmute your mic. We're going to be swearing you in. And so I believe we have everybody here that needs to be available to speak. And so let's go ahead and Johanna, let's do the swearing in, please.
Okay, with your right hand raised, you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. And I know that I unmuted Kristen Renfro. I'm going to mute you again and we'll put you back on for public comment at this point. We're going to go ahead and start. Ms. Grant, you said we needed to start with an issue. Do we need to, does Mr. Porter have that to speak to us about or do you want to start us off on that? How do you want to go about that?
The green sheets that are just being handed out to your board do address, I see here, make references to the initial study, but I think that your board needs to satisfy itself as to whether this matter can go forward today, given that the initial study involves 20,000 square feet of cannabis cultivation. But the report is indicating cumulative 40,000 square feet of cultivation. And if your board members had, I'm sure in going through the initial study, you'll see that many of the environmental factors that are considered are considered on the basis of 20,000 square feet. So if community development has a response to that in terms of allowing the matter to go forward, your board may want to ask how your board could still consider the appeal today. Wait, obviously you're going to have to consider the appeal today, but how you can consider the merits of the appeal today, given that discrepancy. And he may have, he may have an explanation that your board will consider acceptable, but it is, it is a considerable discrepancy.
So having just received this packet, I think I'd like to open it up so that we can at least hear from staff to see what our options are for today and then maybe taking a five-minute break so we can at least go through and read this. Since this was provided to us, I think it's important that we at least browse through it and glean what we can from it for the conversation. And so is everybody okay with taking that strategy for this?
Yes.
Okay. So Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a PowerPoint prepared, but I don't know how to start it.
Okay, do you have a USB? Do you?
Matthew is poised to start.
Oh, perfect. All you had to do was ask.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
This is an appeal of file number UP 20-45 and initial study, might help if I get my right glasses here, 20-56. Next slide, please.
Hang on a minute, this does not look like the correct PowerPoint. Is this?
It's, it's the Trianon Resort and those were the people that were appealing. So this does look correct.
So is the appellant's presentation?
Is that the appellant's presentation or yours?
No, this is actually staff. I just wanted to give some context to the appeal.
Okay. Thank you for checking.
The appellant owns a resort located about 4,600 feet away from the cultivation site. It's called Latreon. And here's an aerial photo of the resort and the cultivation area. Next slide, please. Here's a zoning map showing the subject sites and Latreon is not in that photograph. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the cultivation sites. I believe that's actually Phase 2, which would show the totality of the cultivation sites. And this is what was evaluated within the initial study. However, there is a reference to 20,000 square feet of cultivation area within the initial study, even though the defined boundary has two phases and it clearly defines Phase 1 as 20,000 square feet. Phase 2 is an additional 10,000 in each of the two cultivation sites. So the initial study actually did cover the entire 40,000 square feet. Next slide, please. Blue Lake Resort, I'm sorry, Blue Lakes Permit. The primary address for the cultivation sites is 10717 Schuet Road. It's owned rural lands. There are two parcels involved. They total 46 acres in size. The slope at the cultivation site is about 10%, although the rest of the property is much steeper. So there are applicants requesting one A Type 3 medium outdoor cultivation license consisting of 40,000 square feet of cultivation area at the end of the second stage. Next slide, next slide, please. So any use permit related to cannabis has to meet the terms of the general plan that apply. In this case, it would be under rural lands and there are some provisions that mainly relate to economic development. The general plan doesn't have any specific cannabis criteria, but it does have other economic development, open space, compatibility of uses and so on that we have to evaluate. So we found that it met the general plan conformance criteria. It needs to meet the Lake County zoning ordinance criteria, which are primarily found in two different sections. In this case, well, actually three different sections. It would be rural lands, I believe that's Article 7. It would be Article 27 subsection AT, which covers commercial cannabis cultivation and Article 51.4, which has six required findings for approval. We found that it met all the criteria within the zoning ordinance. It needs to comply with the Upper Lake Neese area plan. We found that it was consistent. The Upper Lake Neese area plan does not have any requirements for commercial cannabis, but it does have some for economic development, open space, and I believe agriculture. And it needs to be consistent with the IS MND, the initial study. Next slide, please. So the points of the appeal, the appellant has indicated that there was deficient mitigated negative declaration due to the following. Potential significant impacts of the proposed use were not studied. The initial appeal was kind of vague as far as what specifically we did not identify in terms of impacts. Article 27 subsection AT requires us to look out 1,000 feet around the perimeter of the cultivation site for youth attractant types of facilities. That will include churches, parks, schools. We did that, would also include daycares and similar. There was nothing within 1,000 feet of the boundary of the cultivation area that qualified as being a potential conflict in terms of youth attracting facilities. As I indicated before, Latreon is located about 4,600 feet from the border of the property of Blue Lakes. So it would be beyond the notification area and it would also be beyond the 1,000-foot setback that we were required to put in place. Next slide, please. Actually, could you go back one slide, please? Forward one. Yeah, there are 21 categories that we have to evaluate in each initial study that we submit to the State Clearing House. We did, we evaluated each of the 21 categories for specific environmental impacts and we determined that there were five categories that had some potential for impacts. And the Planning Commission actually put several additional mitigation measures in place, primarily for odor and I believe aesthetics to offset potential impacts. I may be mistaken about the aesthetics, but I know they put one in for odor. Next slide, please. So the impacts that were determined to be potentially impactful are air quality, cultural tribal, geology and soils, noise and mandatory findings of significance. And the last category is cumulative impact of the proposal. Next slide, please. So the appellant then goes on to say that land use compatibility with Latreon Resort was not studied. Staff's response to that is that Article 27 subsection AT requires 1,000-foot minimum separation requirement between uses that have potential to be youth oriented. Latreon Resort is located about 4,600 feet from the closest edge of the cultivation area based on aerial photo measurements. Next slide, please. Appellant indicated concerns over drainage and runoff to neighboring properties and that the Blue Lakes not studied. Our response is the applicant provided an engineered stormwater management plan prepared by Vanderwall Engineering. The plan evaluates all potential stormwater impacts and incorporates best management practices to mitigate potential impacts related to stormwater. And I want to add that the property management plan also identifies in text how the stormwater would be mitigated. And that would be using straw wattles, which is a fairly common way of mitigating stormwater impacts. So the appellant then says odor drift to the resort was insufficiently reviewed and addressed. Our response is the Planning Commission added a condition requiring fragrant non-cannabis plants to be planted around the perimeter of the cultivation area as a means of masking potential odors. While SEQA does not require potential odors to be evaluated, there are no distance thresholds associated in SEQA. I didn't read that right. While SEQA does require potential odors to be evaluated, there are no distance thresholds associated in SEQA. The resort property is located almost one mile from the cultivation site. Next slide, please. And finally, the appellant says the site plan was not prepared by a design professional. Our response is in 2020, the former CDD director began accepting drawings that were not prepared by area engineers, I'm sorry, that were prepared by area designers, provided the plans are high-quality drawings that were drawn to scale and contained required elements. The initial plans are prepared by JAAK Studio Designers, a professional design firm. The applicant has since provided revised drawings that were prepared by Bill Vanderwall, a licensed civil engineer. Next slide, please. So we did submit an IS MND to the state. I've indicated that there is a discrepancy between the 20,000 square feet in the SEQA document versus the 40,000 square feet that is shown in Phase 2 of the site plans. However, the SEQA document was reviewed under the Phase 2 version. The 20,000-foot reference is incorrect. I mean, it's a typo. The Planning Commission determined that all potential impacts associated with the use permit could be mitigated and approved, and approved use permit 20-45 and adopted the initial study IS 20-56. Next slide, please. On October 24th, the Planning Commission made the required findings for approval for the following. Major use permit UP 20-45 meets the standards and criteria found in Article 51, Section 51.4A and in Article 27 subsection AT. And the mitigated negative declaration IS 20-56 would provide sufficient mitigation measures to assure that no adverse environmental impacts would result and that all potential environmental impacts could be reduced to less than significant. And finally, our recommendation is to deny the appeal AB 21-03, approve use permit UP 20-45 and adopt initial study IS 20-56. And I think that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this point, since we've already provided the community development, I would definitely like to continue on and get the perspective of the appellant prior to continuing further into any discussion. And I, I thought that this originally came from staff and I'm incorrect, this came from the appellant. And so at this moment in time, I'd just like to hear from the appellant and hopefully they'll give us a brief summary of what we've just received so we don't have to take a break to review all that. And so I believe that the appellant, if I'm correct, Kristen Renfro, are you representing the appellant right now?
I am, hi, thank you.
All right. So go ahead and it's your turn to present.
Sure. And, and so I think what you all received there in hard copy is a copy of correspondence that we submitted late yesterday. Wanted to get it to you, would have liked to have been able to get it to you further in advance of the hearing, but as we, as we really got into the documents on this... in advance of the hearing, but as we really got into the documents on this, and took a really close look, we just found more and more issues with the original site plan that was prepared by the applicant with the initial study. And so, it became a much bigger undertaking than we initially believed it would be to try to outline for you really clearly what some of the fundamental problems are with the applicant's materials and with the way this project was studied. We have provided you basically a recitation of a number of things that we have found in the initial study, that we found in the staff report, the project management plan, the conditions of approval that are problematic. And we also provided you a copy of a site plan review that we commissioned from Mendo Lake Engineering by a licensed civil engineer to take a look at the site plan that the applicant produced, or I think it was produced by Jack Studio. And it outlines for you some of the problems with the site plan in terms of the accuracy of the information shown, where improvements are on the property, setbacks, issues with the accuracy of representations regarding the slope of different areas of the property. There are some figures illustrating the issues where our civil engineer has gone in. I think what would help you to understand really clearly some of the problems here is if you jump to Figure Two of that report, which is toward the end of the materials, and I apologize that there aren't page numbers on the document, but it's, there's a series of figures, I think Figure One through Six. Figure Two, there's an overlay that shows information about where the currently cleared grow areas and roads actually are on the ground on the properties. And you can see very clearly they don't align to where those things are depicted in the site plan. That's part of the application. And then, also delineated are setbacks from, I think it's a seasonal stream on the property, the property lines, calling out the neighboring uses, and setback from a home that's off-site. Our concern overall, and there's a number of specific things, and I don't know how detailed you would like me to go through some of these things, but the general issue here is that there are a lot of discrepancies. And it's unclear to us whether Phase Two, the Phase Two scope of work, was genuinely included as part of the project considered when the initial study was completed. The Phase Two improvements, which include a large structure to be put on the property as well as cultivation or new canopy area, are not called out in the project description, which is included in Item 17 in the initial study. So, we're not confident that the impacts have been fully studied here, and potential mitigation necessarily identified and included as part of the conditions for approval. I noticed, I mean, one thing we didn't, I don't think put in our letter, but I noticed it now, is that Item 11 in the initial study calls out the slope in the cultivation sites as being mostly less than 10%. But if you look at, I think it's Figure Five, in our, excuse me, Figure Six in our engineer's report, the slopes for the two cultivation sites are called out, and, you know, in no location do we see a percentage less than 10%. I see 15, I see 18, 14, 11, and, you know, we don't know to what extent all of these issues, you know, the degree of their significance, but fundamentally, there's a problem because the site plan and the inaccuracies are fundamental and foundational to how the initial study was completed, the environmental review undertaken, just on wrong assumptions. In addition, you know, there was clearly grading work done, site preparation and grading of roads on this property prior to the study and the grant of, or the approval of the permit. And that grading work is not included as part of the scope of the project that was studied. We think it should be. We think, although it was done prior, it was clearly done in furtherance of the project. And so, you know, what we're looking for here is for someone to put on the brakes and send this back, so that a proper evaluation of all of the project components and necessary mitigation can be undertaken. Because right now, we're very concerned that there's been a lot of after-the-fact attempts to put Band-Aids on problems, when fundamentally, there are some issues that are not being properly addressed here, and would have been, we think, if, you know, a design, you know, an actual engineer or someone appropriately licensed was involved early on in putting together the site plan. And so, we've laid that information out, and that's what we're asking the board to take action on.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for any questions or comments.
Mr. Chair, you also may wish to inquire if the project applicant is here and wishes to speak.
Is the project applicant here? Mr. Franco?
Sir?
Yes, he was. He put his hand up.
So, I also want to state that when I first decided to move forward with the plan for commercial cannabis, I looked at all the, you know, the ordinance, and pretty much based everything that I did on what the county and the state was looking for and asking for. And that's pretty much all I did, was just meet all the requirements that my local jurisdiction wanted and that the state wanted. I mean, I thought that, you know, I called a professional designer to draw up these plans for me, and that's what it required from me, and that's what I did. So, I went ahead and got Bill Vanderwall from Kelsville, who is an engineer, to do a stormwater management for me, so I was meeting those criteria that people were worried about. I also did a hydrology report by him, by an engineer, to, so it doesn't affect my neighbor's wells, because I'm concerned about water usage, and pretty much have been doing everything on my part to make everyone happy around me, because, I mean, we don't want no angry neighbors. So, I mean, that's all I can say. I mean, it would be nice if we could have this step at the very beginning of our application process, so we don't have to spend all this money and go through all this process, to have this at the end, once our project is approved, and, you know, have people mad at us because of what we're doing. So, it would be kind of good to have this option for people to, you know, to try and appeal our application at the very beginning, just so we don't have all this time and money consumed into this project. I know where they're coming from, and we're doing everything that we can to meet all the erosion control, odor. I mean, they're a mile away. I mean, I know that there's more than agro around the area, so odor control, I mean, it can be coming from anywhere. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you very much. And we may have some questions for you coming up. And so, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments at this moment? So, I'm, I'll just provide my opinion on this. I think the project itself, I think, is a good project. I think that the distance from the appellant is a decent distance. Actually, it's a great distance, and there's also some topography to help protect further that distance, as well as some vegetation. I have no issue with the idea of the project. I just want to make sure that everything is clean as far as what has been submitted to the state and what we're about to approve here. And here, we're being asked to approve the initial study, and I don't feel that I can approve the initial study for the fact that it doesn't match what is being said. I just redid a quick review again of the initial study. I don't see 40,000 square feet anywhere, and I don't see phases anywhere. And so, that concerns me that the state did a review of something that maybe they did not understand. Yes, they have the map that is on the initial study itself, but there's also, I have a couple other concerns where there's some discrepancies that I think needs to be cleaned up. And so, one of them is on the property management plan. It says specifically 40,000 square feet of canopy, and I think that sometimes canopy and cultivation area gets kind of intertwined and intermixed. But if it's 40,000 square feet of canopy, then it's more than 40,000 square feet for the entire project. And so, we need to make sure that we're using the correct numbers, where in the memo, it says it's 30,000 square feet of canopy, and 40, or 34,000 square feet of canopy and 40,000 square feet of cultivation area, so meaning the dry sheds, the bathrooms, the fertilizer shed, and things like that are all part of the square footage. But when I'm reading the property management, it speaks specifically of 40,000 square feet of canopy. And I think that that's a discrepancy that we need to make sure that we resolve and that we make sure we're looking at the right thing. I believe also the initial study did not have the fertilizer shed inside the study as well, and it's missing a well in the study. There's two wells. There's one on the north side, and there's one on the south side, because I was curious how water was going to get to both gardens. And the initial study only speaks of one well. I'm not sure if it only speaks of one, because there's only one that's being drilled, and the other one is already in existence, so please let me know if it doesn't require to be in the initial study or not. But those are some of the discrepancies that I saw. I was also curious about the map. When I looked at the site map, I was curious about the 100-foot setback that we have from property lines, as it looked like Site One is the one north? Is Site One the one in the north? Mr. Porter?
Site Two.
Site Two is the one on the north?
Yes.
And it looks like it goes all the way to the property boundary with the way that the dotted line is. No, it's Site Three, sorry. The one on the north is Site Three.
That's correct. Site Three.
And it looks to me, if the dotted line, which is what Site Three arrow points to, is that dotted line, is that the plan to plant all the way to the perimeter, or is the dotted line not something I should pay attention to? I was a little confused by that.
Well, staff's assumption was the shaded area represents the canopy area.
Is that an assumption, or is that, do we know where the specific area is? Is it the shaded area?
That's an assumption.
Okay. And then, I did, in the paperwork that we just received, there was one thing that I had not noticed that I'm curious about, and in this, it's using Site Two area, and it shows, and I'm going to guess it's an estimate, but it's something that we need to be cognizant of and careful, that there's only a 30-foot, 34-foot setback from the seasonal creek. And I believe that Water Board is about 100 feet, could be 50 feet. I know there's some differences in bodies of water, and I just want to make sure that we are careful around those bodies of water, to make sure that there's no runoff, and that we protect, and that does go directly into Blue Lakes. So, I just want to make sure that that setback for garden, Site Two, for that garden is appropriate. That's something that I noticed, and I appreciate it was brought to my attention. So, again, I think the project is in a good location. I think that it has merit to be a positive project and be successful. But at the same time, I'm stuck in wanting to deny the appeal for the fact that the state reviewed, Planning Commission reviewed, with some pretty drastic discrepancies, and we need to make sure that we fix that. And my hope, and I know the applicant does not want to hear this, is that we can go back, review those things, resubmit it through the process, and maybe allow him to be eligible for early activations, for the fact that he has been doing that, I believe, two years or one year? Two years. And I'd love to find out, have there been any complaints? And if not, then I think it's a perfect thing to allow that to continue as it was, because that was only 20,000 square feet. We've just seen that it was approved for 20,000 square feet. But here's my other problem with the 20,000 square feet, is we don't even know specifically where that 20,000 square feet is. Because it says 20,000, we're shown 40,000, but which, it's hard for me to know exactly what to do. But today, I think I'm going to be looking to approve the appeal with no, what is it called? No prejudice, so that it does have the, without prejudice, or Ms. Grant?
Oh, without prejudice, yes. There are a couple of options that you would have. I'm happy to outline those for your board when you ask me, or if you ask me.
Okay. And so, that's where I stand on this, and looking to have any other comment.
I'll go ahead and make that request, Anita, if you could lay out some options for us.
Yes, sir. I would note, as an initial thing, if the 20,000 square feet is a typo in the initial study, it is a typo that recurs throughout the document. It recurs as the environmental impacts are being discussed. It occurs in terms of aesthetics. It occurs in terms of drainage. It occurs in terms of greenhouse gas emissions, and I believe also wildfire. So, the 20,000 square feet is what was considered under this. I see also no mention of phases, and a phased project has a particular meaning under SEQA and particular guidelines surrounding it. A phase is not the next step. That's not what a phased project is. So, I would think that that might have to be qualified. I think that your board, in terms of this, is looking at whether this initial study actually evaluates the project before you. If it does not, then I think your board could simply grant the appeal and remand the matter back to the Planning Commission for further environmental review based upon either the initial study as it exists, scaling down the project to the 20,000 square feet, or redoing the initial study to actually evaluate what has been before you, because these are drastically different things. So, that is an option. In the alternative, you could simply grant the appeal on the basis that the initial study does not appropriately evaluate the project at hand, and in that case, without the remand, the application would have to start over in large degree. The other alternative is you could deny the appeal. If you choose to deny the appeal, I'd recommend that you give specific findings as to address the discrepancies between the initial study and the project as presented by staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have further questions, I'm sitting here.
No, I want to thank you for giving those options. You know, President, you brought up some great points, but I think, you know, I need to cut right to it. You know, moving forward here, and we've talked about this, we want to make sure any projects that are being done are going to be studied to the full amount. I think if there's an opportunity for us, and which it sounds like there is, to have this returned back to the Planning Commission, so they can do the full study on it, you know, that is the direction I would like to see us move, at least from my opinion. That way, it's not a complete restart. It is just, hey, you know, we need to go back, and we need to analyze this and have the study move forward in that direction. So, that's where I stand on this.
I'm prepared to approve the appeal without prejudice, but if you all feel like we should give it back to the Planning Commission, I'm fine with that as well. But I've already, my mind was already made up, so.
Okay. And I have not opened it up for the public yet, so waiting to see if there's any further comments before doing so. And seeing none, let's go ahead and open up for the public, and again, only for those who have been sworn in. And seeing none... And seeing none, then let's go ahead and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Supervisors make an intended decision to approve Appeal Number AB 21-03 and overturn the Planning Commission's approval of use permit UP 20-45 and the adoption of initial study, IS 20-56, supplied for Blue Lakes Organics on two parcels located at 10-680 and 10-717. Schuetz Road, Upper Lake, APN 003-001-21, and 003-002-11, and direct County Council to prepare findings of fact in support of approval of this appeal.
We're remanding it back to the...
Oh, did you want to remand? Yeah, and then we'll remand it back to the Planning Commission, based on either re-conducting the study according to the 40,000 or the 20,000, whatever.
For further environmental review.
For further environmental review.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall, a second by Supervisor Pyska. Roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Salatian.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that does it for all of our open session items. And so with that, we're going to go into closed session. 9.1, Conference with Legal Counsel: Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.91, Center for Biological Diversity, Etal versus County of Lake Etal. 9.2, Public Employee Evaluation, Title: Director, Department of Public Works, Water Resources, Community Development Department, until June 13, 2021. 9.3, Public Employee Evaluation, Title: Director, County Administrative Officer. 9.4, Public Employee Evaluation, Title: Director, Interim Health Services Director. 9.5, Conference with Negotiators Regarding Property Tax Exchange for the Annexation of the South Main Area, 136.78 acres, south of the current Lakeport city limits. Price and Terms of Payment: A, County Negotiator Supervisor Scott, Supervisor Simon, and Carol Hutchinson; and B, City of Lakeport. And with that, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break, and we will reconvene at 10:31 in closed session. Thank you, everybody, for joining us today. 11:31.